Good evening, and welcome to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March 8th, 2023. It's our regular bimonthly meeting, and tonight we have the special circumstance of having the heat not working, so I hope everybody brought an extra jacket or cover up some, something to keep them warm. We'll, we'll hope to keep things moving this evening, so we don't have to be too cold. As is customary, we have a moment of silence. Please join us with a moment of silence this evening. Thank you. Please join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The special actions, that brings us to our first round of, first round of public comment. If we have anybody who would like to make a comment, come forward to the podium and state your name and, okay, seeing none at the moment, we'll just keep moving along. That brings us to minor approvals, and we have a memorial bench request for Robert Ridge Park. And I believe Megan is going to do our, our parking rec, parking recreation director Megan is going to do the presentation to the honors. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, nice to see you all. This is our second request in a couple of years. As I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, we're trying to make it uniform throughout the park system, so when someone approaches us for memorial bench, we already have a bench picked out, so it matches the majority of benches moving forward, and then there's a certain plaque size that they have to get. Residents will pay for this entire project. The only thing that the township is responsible for is the concrete pad and also the labor. So in total, it costs about $2,000 for a resident to get a memorial bench. This particular family just wants to say thank you to their parents, who've been in Newtown for over 40 years, and they had picked Robert's Ridge and a location that faces their house. And when these requests come in, I also work with Public Works Director, so we make sure that it doesn't, you know, cause any issues with grass cutting, things like that. It's not going to be in the middle of somewhere where, you know, folks can't access it. So with your approval, then we wait upon the weather to put the concrete pad in, let it cure, install it, and then sometimes the families have a little, you know, celebration that it's there, and that's it. There's no maintenance with it, again, except grass cutting around the edge. And if you look on the map, they picked along the path of Robert's Ridge, closest to the parking lot, again, facing away from Dolington and Frost. So again, the bench and plaque are already paid for, that's coming from them, and our cost is the labor and the concrete. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have any questions? Do, we're looking to have a motion and an approval for this. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the memorial, memorial bench request?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Phil. So we have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any further discussion? Didn't have any discussion before. Any further discussion? Any, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the bench, memorial bench request at Robert's Ridge Park, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Okay. Thank you all. Good evening. If anybody else from the audience wants a bench, come email me.
There you go. We got a standard process. Okay, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I see Mrs. Donaldson here this evening.
Mary Donaldson, Secretary for the Planning Commission. We met last night with Bucks County Planning Commission members Lisa Wolf and Jeremy Staff to review their work on an update for our overlay district in the LIOLI zoning district. We've been working on it for a while, expanding uses, that sort of thing, and we discussed mostly adding the use of a mixed-use residential, which would be buildings with apartments above and commercial uses below, and some of the commercial uses that would be considered aren't in that district right now. So that's what we've been thinking about, and the overlay would consist of properties which connect to the main roads of the Commons, Friends Lane, Pheasant Run, and Penn's Trail. We had a number of concerns about the exact limits of the overlay and whether we would want to extend the district to the entire Commons, but have decided to leave it as the overlay to protect neighboring residential areas from the relaxed zoning standards such an increased residential density, building, and building height. After our recent presentation for a large multi-unit apartment building on Lower Silver Lake Road, we had some concerns about Newtown being protected from validity challenges, as we do not provide for any apartment buildings. We have asked that in addition to the mixed-use buildings, the BCPC also consider a new apartment building. We are open to the concept of providing this type of housing, but will want to be careful to still preserve the Commons as a place for businesses. We discussed ideas such as limiting the number of units per building or of the entire overlay, or for the entire overlay district. What I mean by that is no more than X number of apartments in the entire business Commons. They will return on April 18th to fill us in on a revised ordinance. We also unanimously voted to recommend that the supervisors approve the updated comprehensive plan for the joint share. We have written a cover letter explaining the change we would like to Section 5 livable communities, and this isn't in your report because I just spoke to them this afternoon, but they have that sheet with the corrections, and they will include them. And we have also voted unanimously to approve the attached, which I put in your packets, addenda, which address Newtown's responses and goals for the plan once adopted. That would only impact Newtown. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Donaldson?
I have a question. I don't know if, I don't know, Mary, if you can answer this, or maybe our solicitor, but in regards to the revision to the LIOLI district, how long would this process take? When would this, how quickly could it go into effect?
I'm pretty sure Dave will back me up. It will be eternal. A long time.
Mr. Calabro knows better than anyone about how long it takes to get something through the joint share, but this would require an ordinance that would have to be reviewed by the planning commissions. County has 30 days to review it. Then you've got a scheduled hearing for all three municipalities. Now, it's got to go to the joint zoning council, it has to be approved for sending to the municipalities to advertise. You know the drill, so it's not going to be any time soon.
Our planning commission hasn't even agreed on an updated ordinance. They're only so far working on descriptions of the new uses. They haven't drafted an entire ordinance yet. So I would think it will be a while.
Mary, would the ordinance only deal with the LIOLI, which means that
Yes.
Upper Makefield and Wrightstown have none of that zoning?
They don't have that zoning district.
Okay, so this is really a Newtown-centric project. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Sounds like we'll be getting the comprehensive plan on our board supervisor's agenda.
That should happen sooner.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm hopeful in the next, within the next couple of meetings that we'll be.
My understanding is, and I think Jerry knows, the other municipalities also had zero changes, so it should just be easy.
Okay.
Okay. Good night, everybody. Going home where it's warm.
Enjoy. Okay, brings us to board member reports, and I'll try to keep mine short. I went to a number of meetings in the last couple of weeks. One was, one was a hearing on the Sterling Act, and it's something that, it seeks, seeks to have the Philadelphia wage tax come back to people who live in the outlined counties. And it would be, depending on our wage ta, depending on our EIT rate, it would be 0.5 or 1% of the Philadelphia wage tax that would come back to a suburban community. It's been, been going since, is it an issue that's been on the table off and on since 1932? So it may happen, it may not. Just wanted to report that. Also went to a Martin Luther King Dream Builders Award annuals, second annual award ceremony at the Bucks County Commission, Bucks County Community College in February 23rd. So that was, that was a nice event. Lastly, we had a fire services commission, and out of that, the fire, the fire chief for Newtown Township and the NFA president are, have, have been putting together a presentation to talk about fire services in the borough and the township, and at some point in the near future, next couple of months at a meeting, or maybe a work session, depending on how we want to do it, they would like to do a presentation on the state of fire services in Newtown. Also, let me see, there was one other piece that I wanted to add. We acknowledged the addition of our deputy chief, who was ceremonially, ceremoniously sworn in last, last meeting. The deputy chief, with the fact of, with the fact of hiring that new chief, deputy chief, that new service, the monthly, the monthly contribution that the borough gives to the township, or is obligated to give to the township per agreement, that should go up, that number should go up. So I've been working with the manager to calculate what that amount is. That's all I have. I would comment that Mr. Mack is not here this evening. He had a medical procedure earlier in the week, and he is unavailable to attend this evening. Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to announce that the Environmental Advisory Committee will have a special April 3rd meeting here at the Township Building at 7:00 with Ferran Savitz of Penn Environment. We are inviting all businesses in the township to educate owners and managers about single-use plastics. There will be a question and answer session where all members of the Environmental Advisory Committee will answer all questions, and a sample ordinance will be distributed to them. We hope to get all of the businesses on board with this, and it has been greeted with great enthusiasm and positivity by our township. We've done extensive research for almost two years to take the temperature of the township on this matter. The ordinance has been passed in cities, townships, and boroughs throughout the state, and we hope to follow in their footsteps for the future of Newtown. The other issue I'd like to talk about is I also attended the Fire Services Commission meeting, and I'd like to say that effective March 5th, North Hampton Township Fire Department has expanded career firefighter coverage to 24/7, 365 days a year. Previously, coverage has been 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. due to lack of volunteers. Newtown Township must find a way to also get this done in the near future. All our homes, businesses need to protect, to be protected as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Calabro, you have anything?
The only thing I have tonight, Mr. Chair, is I'd like to say, congratulations to all the women. I believe today is the International Women's Day, if I'm correct here, and I would just like to.
If I remember from Morning Joe this morning, yes, International Women's Day.
Morning Joe and Mika are somewhere in the world that some conference, but I'd just like to say, I give all the women accolades that are out there, and happy International Women's Day. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Mr. Davis?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. No recreation deport, report tonight? Okay. All right, that brings us to public hearings. I believe our conditional use is listed first, and I'll toss it to Mr. Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional use hearing on the application of Ardana Food and Drink for conditional use to operate uses E5 and E6, and eating place and eating place drive-in in the PC Plan Commercial District at 2948 South Eagle Road, Building 7, Unit 35. I will, before we start, I will mark Board Exhibit 1 as the application, Board Exhibit 2 as the proof of publication of notice of tonight's hearing, Board Exhibit 3 as the proof of posting of the property with notice of tonight's hearing, and Board Exhibit 4 will be the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated February 13th, 2023. Mr. Blackburn is here, representing the applicant. Mr. Blackburn?
Good evening. Joe Blackburn from Whistler Perlstein, here on behalf of the applicant, Ardana Newtown LLC, with respect to its application concerning the approximately 6,700 square-foot vacant tenant space located, as Mr. Sander previewed, at 2948 South Eagle Road. As I'm sure members of the board are well aware, that site is currently vacant but was the former site of the Solstice Restaurant, a similarly situated E5 and E6 eating place use. Application tonight is really, in essence, to pick up the ball and run from where Solstice left off, from a, from an operational standpoint, I would say. We can hear briefly about the differences from the offerings from the proprietor, Mr. Mike Christu, who is joining me tonight, but we are in receipt of the CKS review letter. I would note that, in large respect, the operational components for the Ardana restaurant mirror or are in fact less intense than those which existed with respect to Solstice, particularly with respect to seating, which I'm sure is the most significant in everyone's mind. It is, in fact, not by a great deal, but one fewer seats than that which was for Solstice. The interior and exterior breakdown of those being substantially similar to those that was for Solstice as well. Hours of operation, employee counts, deliveries are all, in fact, less than those which were previously approved for Solstice, and those are all reflected in the CKS review letter, so I won't go through those in particular. I would note that this would be the second Ardana restaurant, a family operation, as I indicated. Mr. Christu and his family have six restaurants. Their other Ardana restaurant is presently operating in the Valley Square Shopping Center in Warrington. Mr. Christu is a Council Rock graduate, so this is a bit of a homecoming for him and his family, and I am happy to make either myself or Mr. Christu available for any questions that the board may have.
Any, any questions from the board? I have two. And there really are 90 seats outside.
There are proposed to be 90. Under the current proposal, there were 92 proposed or approved as a part of the Solstice, so two fewer than were previously contemplated. I mean, everyone saw the globes, right, the igloos, and thought that was the outdoor seating, but that was obviously a COVID evolvement. That was, there was 92 seats proposed and approved for Solstice in the outdoor area, yes.
I had to count them. I was looking at the plan. It was, okay, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
And the other, the other, this may not be something that the restaurant itself can do, but in terms of parking, with the, with the planning commission, us made this point last night, that they've seen more and more employees parking in the, in the regular parking lot there. Could we get a commitment from the restaurant and/or maybe Brixmore to encourage employees to park in a remote location?
Yeah, that's been, if not enforced to the extent necessary, certainly the, the intent of both Brixmore and individual businesses there in, in the Commons as well, or excuse me, in the shopping center as well. You know, it is in the restaurant's best interest to not have its employees taking up the prime spots next to its own restaurant, so I think it fair to say that that would be something that they would best self-regulate. You've seen the, no employee parking. I'm candidly not sure who put that sign up there at the, in front of Chopped, but that is something that is ongoing, but each of the individual tenant users are responsible for monitoring that, and they're, I think, probably the ones best served by doing so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir. Mr. Blackburn, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, good.
Good.
Just some of the normal questions when we get these applications. In regards to, as, just to clarify, eating place E5, and everybody hears about the drive-in, but not necessarily, it's not a drive-in, it's just in there as precautionary measure.
That's correct, yeah. No drive-in contemplated, just that's to address the takeout possibility of the E6.
I also was curious about the 90 seasonal seats. How many tables would the 159 indoor seats encompass?
How many tables would the 159?
Yeah, I'd just like to break things down into tables, because 90 seasonal seats outside is more than half of what's inside. You have a thriving business outside in itself. There's some restaurants that we have in the township that don't even have 90 seats on the interior. And this is, like you said, where the igloos were. This is where we're talking about?
Correct, yeah, the same area. It's not being expanded, not being, yeah.
And there were 90 seats would fit there?
92 would fit there.
Okay. Which, tables of four would be, I don't know, I'd calculate off the top of my head.
Well, there's, I think we submitted a floor plan with the application. I'm just, you know, doing some rough calculations. There's four tops. There's in fact an eight top, and there's some two tops. So looks like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, two tops, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 10, four tops, and an eight top and a six top. So for anybody keeping track, hopefully that adds up to 90.
Okay. I, I believe you. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna dispute that.
But again, I mean.
It just seems like that's, that's an awful lot of what you call seasonal seats.
And those would not be, I think we've talked about it in the context of Solstice and others, the, certainly the intent and expectation is not that, oh, well, in summer, you'll have 160 people inside and another 90 outside. It's, you know, in the summer, you will have the majority of the outdoor seating being used with some maybe overflow inside, not 250 patrons. Can it accommodate it? Yes. Is that the intention? No. Candidly, I don't know that the kitchen could probably, would be screaming at that scenario, but, and then obviously in the off-season, we're, we're at 106, or 160 total, because we're not going to be using the outdoor at all. I think that's probably the fair assumption is that regardless of the season, 160 is probably where you're going to land on a busy Friday or Saturday night, whether that's 90 outside and 50 inside, or all 160 inside.
Hey, I, I hope it's crowded every night. I, I
So do we.
I wish you'd, I'm just making sure that it's not spillover crowded. In other words, and I guess when Mr. Sander goes into the conditions, the old, good old condition about any kind of outside music is not, is gonna be in there.
Certainly, yeah. Haven't heard that in a while, but yeah, yes.
And this doesn't affect the, the ratio of restaurants to space? It's still at the, below the 45?
Yeah, so the last time we were here for a new restaurant was Chopped, and at that time, the, the additional square footage for that brought us up to just a tick over 31%. So this is obviously not increasing that, and I would in fact add that since that time, we've lost both Friends and Dolce, so we're, we're probably, and then those were some significant square footages, so we're probably significantly below that 31% that we were at, at the time of Chopped.
But that, that space is calculated in, even though they're not there, that space is still calculated in the?
In the 31, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Just one thing, I guess, for the, for the owners and the operators that maybe to take into consideration, is I don't know if they want to make your hours of operation uniform, and the reason I always ask this is just in case you want to make any kind of change to the hours, you'd have to come back. If you want to extend the hours and make them longer, now's the time to do it. Doesn't mean you have to live by those hours, but at least you have them incorporated, so you don't have to come back and fill out another application. So I'm just gonna throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I've candidly taken to getting their hours and then grossing them up a little bit myself, so this reflects those expanded hours already. So I think we're good with what's reflected in the CKS, but, but thank you for that, that consideration.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Calabro. Anyone else?
I guess you'll be prepared to send every, a lot of parking over to the other side where all the, there's a lot of empty businesses. That really worries me, the amount of, of tables you're gonna have and the lack of parking. So I, I know you're gonna be faced with that. It's a tough situation there. Have a plan. Have a plan.
Certainly.
Is there any valet parking?
Yeah, we'll have to have you sworn.
Yeah, let's have the witness sworn, please.
And just. And the question was whether you thought about valet at all?
Yeah, and I can kind of touch on the patio also, kind of at the same time. Valet is actually being taken care of by Brixmore, the operator of the shopping center, and that's gonna happen before we open. It's already in the works, from what I understand. I guess they piloted it when Solstice was still open. And to the employee parking thing, from what I've heard from other tenants right there in that small shop, part of the shopping center where we are, employees have started parking in that parking lot again after Solstice closed. So I did talk to Brixmore. I don't want to go around to those businesses and like ask them to change that, but I think it is being addressed also. My, my employees will certainly be parking elsewhere. As far as the patio is concerned, I, I would want it to be full every night as well, but seasonally, we take a big dip in the nicer part of the year. So like he said, when it's patio season, a lot of times the patio might be full, but we won't be at capacity inside. Our busiest season is in the cold weather, so.
While we got you at the microphone, why don't you explain your scope of business, the concept?
Yeah, he touched on it a little bit. Family-owned Mediterranean restaurant. We go, kind of cover the full Mediterranean. My family's from Cyprus, so pretty Greek-heavy, a lot of Italian food, but grew up in Newtown, so I'm excited to come back, and I'm excited to take that space with, you know, a family-owned concept. I think if we weren't to do it, it probably would have been a bigger company, but we'll be lunch and dinner. The hours aren't here, a little bit inflated. We'll be opening a little bit later during the week, closing a little bit earlier during the week. But yeah, kind of comfortable environment and hopefully the type of place that everybody feels like they can go to.
Is it the same concept, food menu, kind of feel as the Warrington?
Yeah, if anybody's
Location, if anybody's been there?
Yeah, if anybody's been there, we're opening with the exact same menu. I think, I mean, we're open to kind of detouring from that, depending upon what people are looking for here as opposed to Warrington, but same feel, same concept, same menu, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you both. Anyone else? Mr. Sander, if we were so inclined?
To ask for public comment.
Oh, okay. Can I ask for a public comment now? Is there any public comment on? Seeing none. Now I can ask.
I am prepared to frame a motion for the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board's of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of Ardana Food and Drink LLC for a conditional use for uses E5 and E6, eating place and eating place drive-in in the PC Plan Commercial District at 2948 South Eagle Road, Building 7, Unit 35. The conditional use will be granted, conditioned on the following. First, that the applicant comply with the provisions of the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated February 13th, 2023. Second, that the hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on Friday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to midnight. Three, there will be 10 employees for the first shift and 15 employees Three, there will be 10 employees for the first shift and 15 employees for the second shift. The average shift will have 10 to 15 employees with a maximum of 20 employees in any given shift. Four, the use will not create any noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust. There will be no loud noises or vibration, or objectionable heat glare, or radiation beyond the property line, and the use will not create any other objectionable condition that will endanger public health and safety. Should this change, or if complaints are received in this regard by the landlord or the township, the applicant will take immediate steps to correct the conditions responsible for these environmental impacts and notify the landlord and township in writing how it will mitigate such conditions in the future. Further, there will be no outdoor speakers, intercoms, nor music outside during, for this establishment, for these uses. Five, there will be no storage of hazardous, flammable, or explosive materials, nor waste on the site. Should this condition change, the applicant must immediately notify the landlord and the township of this fact, including the nature of the materials present in the building and the safety plan for their maintenance within the building. Six, deliveries will be at such times as not to interfere with the flow of traffic, parking, or access to the surrounding businesses. Seven, the uses must comply with federal and state law addressing the Americans with Disabilities Act and all related regulations. Eight, a copy of the lease between this applicant and the landlord shall be provided to the township. Nine, all fees and costs due Newtown Township must be paid in full prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the township. Ten, all signage desired by the applicant must conform to the standards established for the Newtown Shopping Center, that is the Bricksmore Village at Newtown. And finally, eleven, the applicant's trash removal plan must conform to the trash removal plan adopted for the Village at Newtown Shopping Center. Mr. Blackburn, you've heard those conditions, are they acceptable to the applicant?
They are. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it'd be appropriate for the board to consider that motion if it wishes.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the conditional use hearing for Ardana Food and Drink, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a PRD variance hearing for Brennan at 119 Colonial Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, this is an application for a PRD variance for Mike and Jennifer Brennan at 119 Colonial Drive. This is a request to increase the impervious surface from the maximum permitted 25% to a total of 31.45%. Before we get started, I will mark as Board Exhibits B1 is the application, B2 is the zoning officer's memorandum dated January 19, 2023, B3 is the Remington-Vernick Review Letter dated February 10, 2023, Exhibit B4 is the proof of publication, Exhibit B5 is the proof of posting of the property, Exhibit B6 is the Nob Hill Homeowners Association Letter dated January 11, 2023, and Exhibit B7 are three emails from neighbors of the applicant supporting the PRD variance request. Looks like Mr. Brennan, I believe, is here, and it's your show.
Yeah. So I'm Rob McCubbin from Anthony Silver Pool, so I'm gonna kind of give you an overview of what's going on, so I can, I can get started with that. So yeah, I met the Brennans probably back last May, almost a year ago, to talk to them about building a pool. And I was semi-familiar with, because we went through this last year in this development with the, with the impervious surface, and I kind of had a feeling that we were headed this direction with the impervious surface when we added our pool and pool patio. So essentially, where we sit is this property is 16,272.6 square feet. So the impervious max in this R1 development is 25%. So currently, the property sits at 22.98%, which, which is the dwelling, the driveway, front walkway, there's a rear paver patio, and a shed, which make up that 22.98%. So we are looking to build a, I would say, average-sized swimming pool, 640 square feet on the pool. The swimming pool patio, which is really just a walkway around most, I would say, three sides of the free-form pool, and then just an area for lounge chairs, that consists of 722 square feet, and then our pool equipment pad at 21 square feet, which does bring us to, obviously over our impervious limit, which brings us to 31.45%. So yes, we're seeking a variance to, for that additional, additional 6.45%. So we have proposed, and it's been reviewed, but we have proposed a stormwater management system for the property. So the total increase of area is 1,383 square feet. We have proposed a stormwater system that is designed to capture 1,530 square feet. We've done a soils test on the property, we've completed a full stormwater management report, we had it reviewed once, there were some items that we needed to correct, and I believe, I believe the township engineer has that, as of today, has those revisions as of today from that review letter. So I think most of those items on the review letter that we received are handled at this point, with the exception of the very last few, which has to do with some of the processes that would take place if this was approved after, after this meeting.
You ready for questions?
Sure.
Okay. Can you describe just very briefly what your stormwater mitigation is?
Yes. So we did a soils test, because we, I guess in Newtown this year, we are, we are required to do these soils tests now. Anytime stormwater management comes into play, the soils did not perform well. So the, so the alternate method is an on-ground rain garden system that's being built. There are some downspouts, actually from the house, that are being piped into, into the system to help with water collection, existing water collection, and to help try to mitigate any rainwater that leaves this property, but it is a rain garden, in essence, that we would be doing.
And I'm gonna reiterate some things that were already said. You've gotten a letter from the Homeowners Association.
Correct.
And you've got letters from neighbors.
All the adjoining neighbors, yes.
So I think, and you're ready to address those last couple of things from the Remington-Vernick?
Yeah, I believe they, I know our engineer had, had spoke to Leanna on the phone a few weeks ago about some of those items, so I think this, we're gonna get a clean, clean letter based off of this last, last review here. Obviously, if we didn't, we'll do it again to make sure that it's, we have a clean letter before, beforehand.
Anyone else have questions?
Just in regards to the water runoff, I guess, would this rain garden eliminate any runoff to the neighboring properties, Leanna, or?
You can comment. I mean, it should, the way that it's placed is at the rear of the property, beyond the pool, so that's the, the design intention, yep.
Nothing additional like a French drain or anything would be needed to capture water, or?
No, the way it's designed right now is to, is to capture all the, the impervious area, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And you feel confident that they can comply with the rest of the items?
I do, yeah. We had spoken, I had spoken with our engineer, we worked out a few things, they just resubmitted. I have the plans right here, so we'll review, and if there's anything that's still outstanding, we'll work that out, but I believe that they'll be able to comply.
Have we made a decision without, without that? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be a condition of approval if the board wishes to approve it.
We'll make that a condition. Any other comments from the board, from the public? Mr. Sander, if we were to make a motion, could you tell us what we would need to specify?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This would be a motion to grant the application of Mike and Jennifer Brennan for a PRD variance for property located at 119 Colonial Drive to increase the impervious surface to a maximum of 31.45%, where 25% is the maximum permitted in order to allow the installation of an in-ground swimming pool with associated improvements, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the provisions of the Remington and Vernick Engineers Review Letter dated February 10, 2023. Two, the applicant shall follow the Newtown Township PRD variance application guidelines for final submission and recording of the revised approved plan. And three, the applicant shall pay all fees and costs due and owing to Newtown Township before final approval is granted.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Did we ask for a public comment, Mr.? I think you did.
Yeah, we did.
Just checking.
I learned for the first time. Do we want to add that condition that they follow any subsequent review letters?
Well, I, I think they'll need an engineer sign-off on their revised final plan before it even comes to the board to be signed. So the board won't sign it until the engineer signs.
Good enough for me. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll call, call the question. All those in favor of approving the PRD variance for Brennan at 119 Colonial Drive, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four nothing.
Thank you.
I'll see the construction.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you. All right, that brings us to reports of officials, and we have an engineer report, a couple items.
Thank you. The two items that we have tonight both pertain to the Lower Doolington Road Trail Project, so my thought was to sort of summarize them together and then make separate motions, if that's okay. As the board's aware, there's been construction delays as part of this project, resulting from utility providers taking their time, I'll say, relocating the, the fiber optics that are out there. As a result of that, there have been additional costs incurred to our contractor as a result of the delays. In addition, there have been some utilities in areas that they were not supposed to be in, basically water company and things of that nature, so these were field-verified, unfortunately, after construction began. As a result of that, we've had to make a few modifications to the stormwater as a result of the trail. So there's, you know, increased costs to that as well. So unfortunately, these are two. Change order number four pertains to adjustments to the infiltration trenches for the trail for the stormwater management, and then change order number five pertains to the increased material and labor costs as a result of the delay. So these are increasing the, the overall contract amount. Good news is, we've spoken to DCNR, because we have some grant funding with this project, portions of this is able to be reimbursed, so we're working through that process with them, so I think that's some good news here. So I'm happy to answer any questions on these change orders, otherwise we can make motions for, for each.
Any questions for our engineer? I know about utilities being located in a place you didn't expect them. When we had the sewer done on my street a couple of years ago, the cable especially was across the street in different ways that you just wouldn't have, wouldn't have anticipated. Okay, so I'll take these one at a time. Let's do change order number four. Take a motion to pay change order number four for the Lower Doolington Road Multi-Use Trail?
One more. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Have any, any further comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving this change order number four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Going right along to change order number five, I'm going to anticipate there's no board comment.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion, Kyle.
Second.
And thank you, Ellen, for a second. Motion and a second. Do you have any further comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving change order number five for the Lower Doolington Road Multi-Use Trail, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
End of your items?
Yep.
Thank you. Solicitor has no-
Yes, for the first time in recorded history, there is nothing under the solicitor's report. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move right along to the manager's report. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $5,490,485. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, good evening, board members. February 2023 police report. We documented 1,844 calls for service, logged just under 24,000 patrol miles on our fleet. We had 18 arrests. Two were for robbery and assault, two were for theft, which included a gator and a home theft, two terroristic threats, two frauds, two simple assaults, four narcotics possessions, one false report to law enforcement, and five DUIs. There were 12 cases referred to detectives and one crime scene processed, one in which included an aggravated assault, the theft of the all-terrain vehicle, and a couple package thefts. There were 40 traffic crashes, 160 citations issued, and 281 warnings issued. We conducted a targeted truck enforcement detail up in Redstone, Durham Road, and Foxhill, resulting in 15 truck inspections, two citations, two warnings. One vehicle was placed out of service and one vehicle was towed. Notable jobs, the job I mentioned last month about the robbery behind the Steak and Hoagie property down by Jake's. We did affect a positive identification and affected two arrests as a result of that, and they were taken into custody. Significant events, as everybody knows, on February 18th, Sergeant Chris Fitzgerald from the Temple University Police Department was killed in line of duty. The Newtown Township Police Department represented Newtown at his funeral detail. We also assisted Buckingham Police Department in the arrest and search and seizure of the property in Buckingham. Public service announcements, drug takeback is April 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There's a community event in Redstone on May 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and we're having our Cops Cars and Coffee event on May 21st, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Park. Mail thefts are continuing from private mailboxes. Do not put your mail in your own private mailbox outside of residence. I would strongly still encourage you to drop it off inside a post office. And the annual report is posted on our website. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't know if I heard this correctly, at the very beginning of your, your report, you said something about a gator?
Yeah, it's a, it's a quad-type vehicle from the Council Rock School District, was taken from their, their back of their location. We tracked down the quad, we located it in Tyler State Park and affected an arrest.
Got it, got it.
That's good, because I was picturing somebody, you know, climbing on the back of an alligator. So, thank you for clarification.
No problem. The alligator's a new tenant I'm aware of.
Yeah, for now, I'm there.
Wait, that's it? Still coming. All right. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Chairman, I have one final item under my report for the board's consideration. In your packet is included the request for a purchase of a street sweeper from the American Rescue Fund. It was budgeted for $260,000. Unfortunately, the price came back a little bit higher. The Public Works Director has put together a memorandum, this piece of equipment not only sweeps the streets, but is also required as part of our MS4 approvals with the EP. Appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase a street sweeper from the American Rescue Fund in the amount of $292,882.75 through Co-Stars.
Okay, do we have that motion? Okay, do we have that motion?
Some.
And I'll, I'll second it. Um, have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from the board?
I think I've, as I said at our last meeting, that, uh, I'm not in favor of this purchase at this time. I wish we could, you know, finance half of it or find another way to not use up this big chunk of our American Rescue Funds. Uh, I feel there's, it's, some of it is needed in other places.
And I would just, um, reiterate that it's, the, the MS four is important to address as well. Um, could be that once we get a new machine that, that actually works all the time, uh, doesn't need repair, that many repairs, that we could, uh, loan it out and maybe, uh, get, get a little bit of, uh, money back for, for it that way. So, just a couple of thoughts that, you know, I've been keeping in the back of my mind. Plus, there's the possibility of getting, uh, twenty thousand dollars or so, as, as if I'm remembering the, the manager's, uh, number uh, from, uh, a, um, sale of the, of the current street sweeper. So, those are the reasons why I'm willing to vote for it. Yes, you may.
The MS four certainly needs to be complied with. There are other ways to comply with the MS four as well that require a lot less money. And I'd like to see the township address some of them as well, which are, uh, much cheaper.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
In, in regards to, uh, this fulfilling an MS four, uh, qualification, are there any grants available for such a, such a purchase?
Not that I'm aware of off the top of my head.
Isn't, isn't that what the rescue plan is?
Yeah, I guess that's a huge grant, but I was just wondering if there's an additional grant because of the, uh, MS four qualification.
No, that, that is a largely unfunded mandate imposed by DEP in the state of Pennsylvania.
How old is our current, uh, sweeper?
It's a two thousand and three.
Okay. So, so what, what, what would the approximate lifetime of this new one be? Approximately, I mean.
The, the one we had for twenty years, so hopefully twenty.
Okay, so another twenty years of which, uh...
They probably don't make them like they used to.
I doubt it.
And I'm sure our, uh, finance department can depreciate it as time goes on, so it, it, it does become some sort of an asset to us. But this is also, uh, it, it's also instrumental. Luckily, this wintertime, we haven't had snow. But I know in the past, uh, boy, when they throw that rock salt down, it accumulates in all the neighborhoods. And this is one of the, uh, the best ways to eliminate that. And we wouldn't want anybody coming to us saying that their neighborhood is full of rock salt and we weren't, we weren't complying with the cleanup. So, um, I, 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 I think, given that it's a possible twenty-year vehicle, only used every once in a while in regards to seasonal, fulfilling the, uh, uh, requirement of, of the environmental issue, I have no problem, I have no problem with this.
Any other board comments? Any from the public? Please state your names, though.
Hi, John DiApril, Newtown Grant. Biggest of the best. I agree with the manager. He should buy that sweeper. There's one thing that the residents see when a sweeper's around. It makes enough, uh, uh, you know, motor sound and everything, and the residents get to see it. I know in Newtown Grant, uh, they come around once a year. Uh, we'd like to see it more than once a year, but, uh, you know, the board has talked about it and everything. But, uh, you know, with the, uh, you know, constraints and the, the work, the manpower and all that stuff. But I'd like to see them buy the sweeper. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comment, I'll call the question. Those in favor of, there was a motion.
Mr. Clavro made the motion. Yes, you did. You did.
And I second.
I believe, Mr. Lewis.
Very good. So I'll call, go ahead and call the question. Those in favor of purchasing the, I don't know, I'm gonna get it exactly the way Mr. Lewis said it. Uh, purchasing the street sweeper from Coast Stars for the, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Say aye. Aye. Those oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries three, one.
That's all I have under my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Snyder, would you like to do the minutes, bills, and reports?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our February twenty-second meeting?
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Uh, any questions from the board, from the public? All the, let me call the question. Those in favor of accepting the minutes of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
Like to make a motion to pay our bills in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seven cents.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have a comment from the, any other comments from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills as found in the March eighth bills list, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, one.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. Um, any further discussion from the board on this? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of, uh, paying our inter-fund transfers as listed on the May, March eighth bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Uh, brings us to our second round of public comment. Please come forward and podium and state your name and your community and...
Hello, everybody. Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant, resident since nineteen ninety-nine. And, um, I was at the, uh, Special Zoning Board hearing a couple of days ago, and I wanted to give Mr. Sanders a good round of applause for all of his work he did to go against some of the, uh, uh, Wawa's, uh, witnesses that they had. So he did a really good job. But one of the things that, um, they brought up during that is some of the zoning laws are kind of like outdated from like years past. I'm not talking like five years, but like twenty, thirty years. And I think that's something that, um, should be updated because every year new regulations, policies come out for different, um, industries, you know, for traffic studies, for, um, engineering, for signage or whatever. And I think that's something that, you know, the township should look into trying to fix. Maybe have like a committee or a board that looks into that and changes it every year. Because if something comes up like a Wawa or, um, another complex building that people don't want and the township wants to go against it, it makes it very difficult. Where if they take it to court, they could fight and say, oh, this is outdated from thirty years ago. It doesn't comply with the new traffic laws, um, that the industry has and stuff. So I think that's something that we need to look into. And also the comprehensive plan, most people aren't gonna see it. But most people that talk on, online and stuff, um, don't wanna see overdevelopment and see big complexes and big, uh, buildings and stuff cause traffic's already horrendous. Just look at the Village Shopping Center where we added so much in there now that it's horrendous. You can't park anywhere. People gotta park, you know, almost a mile away to walk over there. Um, I know land is, uh, very hard to come by or whatever. And, you know, sometimes you gotta squeeze things together. But people just wanna see kind of what we have now, stay as close to what we have now. Cause we know with anybody, it doesn't matter what business you have, doesn't matter what, um, company you have. If they have a lot of money, they'll find a way to put it somewhere, even if it's not technically supposed to be, uh, built on because they call wetlands or, oh, because this and that's there. They'll find a way to spend enough money to fix it to make it how they want to. So I just hope that, um, you guys will look into some of that and try to fix that so we don't have stuff like Wawa if we don't want it, let's say. Some of us, there, there's an easier way to say no than just being like, oh, well, it's kind of stuck because we're not up to compliance with what the state or the laws are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
John DiApril again, Newtown Grant. Uh, I also was at the zoning, uh, meeting. Uh, always was talking about the signs. Uh, one thing, though, you gotta remember, the attorneys who were there for one reason, they're getting paid. One of the, um, experts that, uh, Pravka had brought up, said that the, uh, zoning law on a sign was ambiguous. And, uh, being a layman, not a lawyer, not a, a traffic expert or ever, it is ambiguous because there's so many things on there that contradict itself. Uh, the main thing is LED lighting. You guys on this board here has talked about LD, LED lighting for, for your, uh, uh, streetlights. LED, LED lighting is the thing of the future. That's where zoning has to catch up. Uh, everybody wants LED. It's in the planning commission plan, looking at LED lighting and, and, uh, you know. So the guy that said ambiguous and the other, and, uh, the other expert that, uh, he, he, uh, cut up the zoning, the zoning thing is ambiguous. And like I said, the lawyers will fight for hours and hours because they're on the clock, they're getting paid. Thank you.
Any other public comment for this evening? All right. Any old business?
I do have some old business. Uh, more, it's more of a, a request for Mr. Lewis. Uh, last week, we had, um, Mr. McGuigan ask some questions, and I believe we're passing them on to our engineer. And I understand we're not gonna have those answers quickly. So I just wanted to make the request that we get that, those answers to the board for the next, the next meeting. Uh, also, regarding email exchange that went around about, um, Sunday work hours over at Arcadia slash Mayfair. Is that something we can regulate? Cause I do get contacted a lot about noise complaints over there. Like, and what is the limit of our regulation of, of the weekend scheduling?
So the way the, the ordinance is written currently, they're permitted to work on Saturdays. We're trying to mitigate that. As far as Sundays go, they're not allowed to work on Sunday. So if, if there's any issues on Sunday, the residents are urged to call the, uh, police department.
Okay.
And we'll deal with it on our end on Monday morning.
All right, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
And I, I suggested to the manager that if Saturdays are gonna be an option, to have them start later in the morning so people get, get a good night's sleep.
Most of the complaints that I've received were morning-related.
Any other old business? I, I have just a very brief comment. I, I have gotten, um, requests for appointments from six, up to six people in the Economic Development Committee. So we may be able to put that committee together. I, I've sent an email to, uh, Mr. Peters, who was the former chairperson of the Economic Development Committee, uh, to see if he wanted to help me contact some people and, and get their, all their information. And I think I'm, I think I'm, oh, I, I think the, I think folks, there's, there's two folks that need to submit a letter of, letter of interest in writing. They've talked about it, talked about it verbally, but they didn't give it to us in writing, as well as it. They haven't given a resume yet, so we're gonna, Mr. Peters and I will work together to get that done and maybe have a paper presentation to the board for the next meeting. Any other old business? Any new business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I, I have a, a request of the manager and/or if the manager can pass this on to whoever is the appropriate party. Over in the, uh, Promenade area where, um, Listola Italian Market sits, there is a, um, fire hydrant that's been covered, uh, for, well, maybe six months now, which is indicating that it's out of commission. And I think it's the only fire hydrant within the Promenade parking lot. So it, uh, does, uh, does pose some sort of a danger, you know, if something were to happen there. I just wonder if the appropriate parties could be contacted to either repair that fire hydrant or just to make sure that fire hydrant is in, uh, can be properly used so that it, that area is protected, uh, God forbid something were to happen there.
Yes, I can pass that on along to the, uh, Water Authority. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any other business this evening? Seeing none, uh, if there's, without objection, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.